So, you know, there's quite a bit of analysis that we put into this.
Absolutely.
And we feel really confident with what we've got. And I know it's a lot of data and just, I just wanted to assure you that this is not something we can delay later.
And I hate to do this, we've got to start the next, the meeting itself. Do you want to ask real quick?
Real quick, the sewage from the individual homes. You're working with Travis on that already?
Yeah.
Because it looks like it has to travel somewhere despite the way we stay there.
That's correct. You know, we're working with Travis on that and we presented our plan up, expressed our plan to him. And he, we're waiting on a call back from him.
Perfect, thank you.
Awesome.
Maybe we can come back another time and talk about the park areas and.
Oh, you can go during the meeting. Yeah, this is just the workshop.
We, I think we'll probably have to put this on for thirty days to vote on it, just to look at the information, hear what they say. And then make a vote on it.
Excellent, yeah.
Yeah, we were going to ask you to do that anyways.
Are you, okay.
Yeah, we were going to ask, move into January. We know that it's a lot that's been given to you.
It's a lot, yeah. But I do, I really would like to see the whole presentation at the meeting, so, thank you, because it's, it's big. All right, we've got one minute. And you can leave here easily if you want to. Can I make everything up there? That's.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, not a problem. Thank you for all that information. All right, six o'clock. We're going to call the Montego Regional Planning Commission needing to order. Doesn't look like Richard has made it back. Richard, no. Janet Miller Schmidt here. Ed Provo.
Here.
Dorian Parmerly. Here. Peter, no. Greg Malou.
Here.
And I am here. Let's look at the previous meeting's minutes from November first. That is in your packet. Are there any additions or corrections?
Move the document.
All right, got a motion. Need a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? Fantastic. Staff and community reports. So Earl is no longer. And we have no building inspector at this time.
We have a system where a city employee will be getting certified, taking the courses, et cetera. And we have negotiated or almost finished negotiations of someone to review those plans in the meantime.
Wonderful.
So we'll put the package together, we'll get all the information, we'll submit it to this person that is working with us. And he'll have the stamp and seal and if it's good, we'll pursue. And that's an interim temporary.
And well, we're in a transition.
Yes.
Any reports that you can think of that deal with the planning commission other than that, that we need to be updated on?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay, very good. Anya?
I don't have any.
Okay, all right, very good. Let's, let's see, the old business. We are tabling the building permit expiration zoning code amendments. So that's a table. Moving on to new bus.
Do you need to do a motion in a second or a table?
Yes, we need to.
Do we?
Motion, I think.
Very good. Any a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Make it all.
To note again, the final revisions for review before the next meeting on Nate's proposal. We could.
And did he finish that, you know?
I said he was going to, but I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
If you talk to him.
We did include the work sheet on it.
Right, bottom of it's been changed since that, you know.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Moving on to new business. The new storage facilities permits as special exceptions, use in C two and C three. I believe in the workshop, we have that discussion to also table it.
Motion, I think.
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor. Need a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion?
So what would you like me to bring next time, so we can discuss it? Because I felt like we were talking about three different issues.
Mm-hmm.
We were. And, I mean, so it sounds like you want to take it in a different direction than was previously talked about, but. And, yeah, what kind of research do you want me to bring for the next one? Do you want to talk about industrial use or storage unit in commercial?
We could go around and around on that, didn't we?
Can you explain for those sitting in the room what you're talking about?
Sure. So in the previous months, we've discussed putting higher restrictions on storage facilities to restrict them, new development coming into Montego. One way of doing this would be making them special exceptions use in C two and C three. The conversation was going around in the last meeting because there was a request from Dean Lay in previous meetings to put new storage facilities in commercial. And he's also rezoning, wanting to rezone a property in industrial that didn't get passed. And it's going to get a little bit.
So storage has to be industrial or can be?
It's only commercial. It's only C two right now.
Which is our corridors.
But there's the one thirty-four.
We're talking about regular kinds of storage units that hold household goods and so forth.
Right.
This is run to the self-storage unit.
Self-storage, okay.
And right now, it can exist in C two and it can exist in industrial, but we don't have industrial zones.
No, it only exists in, oh, does it? Okay, yeah, okay, and then the.
And we have no industrial.
Right, okay.
Right, and that is a directional thing as far as land use on C two.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Seven forty West Main Street site plan, Mr. Newham. Your turn again.
Do you want me to present again or?
We've got a full house.
And you need to take the microphone.
Oh, yeah, the microphone, yeah, we need to go up and be official.
I know everybody that's trying to plan, so they not pushed yet. At least I can show you this. This is a building, it's a convenience store and industrial. And it's on point seven acres on forty one. We're meeting all of, we brought this to T-Dot. They agreed that this is a good layout. The owner has worked with his.
Could you speak into the microphone, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, the owner has, I'm sure. That's deep. Does it matter?
That's much better, thank you.
The owner has, I think actually has, I think, you know, a clear contract with the gas company. So they looked at it, they're fine with it, the way that it's played out. The only thing that we're asking for, of all the things that we've discussed, we're down to three items that we'd like.
You're just not staying on. Yeah, we're going to have, you're going to have to run.
Test.
Yes.
The three items that we've come down to from what originally was twenty-three items, I guess. We're down to the ordinance requiring the landscaping. And in that, what we're doing is using, we were about a thousand square foot short of the twenty percent of the total that's required based on the area in front and to the side of the building where we have roads. So now, what we're doing is proposing that the parking lots where the cars are parked, that that will be a pervious surface. And it's about twenty-five percent of the total, of that total area, which gets us to the twenty percent as required by the ordinance. The second item is, in the ordinance, there is a requirement that there has to be thirty foot on the backside of the building for loading and unloading. This ingenious young man has figured out that he can do that from the front, therefore does not need to have thirty foot in the back. And so I applaud him for that. And then the third issue was, I don't remember what the third issue was.
We named them all.
We got the.
We got the landscape.
We got the back. It is water treatment.
You named them all. You named the, you talked about the contract with the gas.
Yeah.
You talked about alternate landscaping, you talked about the thirty foot.
Okay, so that's it.
So that's it.
That's all we need. We're ready to go.
So, talking with my planning team and planning director, so T-Dot didn't approve the layout. They just approved access to the state route. To, in our, for our planning team, the layout is really narrow drive space. And if the fuel provider change, that letter wouldn't stand. If you wanted to sell the property, it might change. And I think it's a very narrow space for a truck to come through. And if you had a bigger truck with a trailer, it would have a hard time going through. For alternate landscaping, I think turf stone is a great idea, but I don't think it fits into your landscaping goals. Especially it being right there at exit one thirty-four, right when you come in. It's considered like the gateway of the Cumberland Plateau. That seems like the reason why you developed really strict site plan requirements in the first place. And then that thirty foot setback, I mean, if you are, even if you're proposing that you're using the front as a loading and zoning, then you're going to have to request variance. And I don't see a variance getting approved because this doesn't have anything to do with topography. State law wouldn't approve, you know, of great understanding.
Yeah, question. So what are you saying is in the back, you can have thirty feet of loading and unloading?
Yes, according to Montego's ordinances. They could change those ordinances. They could have got, you know, approval variance regardless, but I wouldn't recommend it.
So, I mean, the question is, why would we need thirty feet of loading and unloading, out of curiosity? Because we, I mean, we're not going to have. Only thing we can unload is everything from the, from all the trucks. So, I mean.
It's, it's just in ordinance that we're required, that we are married to, until we're not. We can always change it, like we said.
But, I mean, the reason I ask is just, you know, if you're, I have a front thirty-three feet setback and have a back setback, it's, I had nothing left in the middle.
And, you know, I appreciate the landscape, though, but this typical property is surrounded by Hardee's and the Piggly Wiggly and another gas station. It has no landscaping at all. And it just seems like lipstick on pig to make them come in here and doll that one little corner up when the rest of it.
Exactly.
Is just what it is.
I agree.
I am more concerned about traffic flow and the damage that would cause. We'd have to address landscaping some of that. That's my concern. And that is the only issue I have with that is the Parker Street next to Hardee's. I cannot visually see how you and Hardee's are going to exit two different directions right next to each other on Parker Street, that close to forty-one, and not have issues. I can be proved wrong or I can change my mind, but I need to see how that works.
And we can do that. Wayne McCoy is our civil engineer. He can work with T-Dot and we'll come back with some, in the final draft of what we could.
If the dimensions are there and it works.
Yeah.
It may involve some, some of Hardee's input too.
Yeah.
And neighbors with it, but.
But there may also be other development on Parker Street.
Right.
It's not just you and Hardee's. And it goes down a little ways and there may be another structure.
Can I, can I respond to what you just said, Ed, about the landscaping? I think that that whole area from that exit towards Suwannee, our commercial area in Montego, is a dog. I mean, it's a dog. And the fact that other businesses that are already existing have not had to, to address landscaping, doesn't mean that let another dog come in there without landscaping.
I understand.
Let's bring up the level of what we expect and support landscaping and a beautification of that area so that it's not just the ugliest part of Montego completely.
I understand.
Thank you.
Well, as we've said, there may be construction and work in that whole interchange area. And maybe we should wait for that finished product to see what they do. Because there is talk, and I don't know, some of you know I'm new to this game. There's going to be a major interchange renovation, partly mountain goat trail, partly traffic, partly whatever. So we're not sure of the finished product. And to Ed's point, maybe we make that part two of this discussion. But you're right, there's no need that it can't be fixed. But what do we tell Shell? What do we tell Piggly Wiggly? Once you get to the Amish store, you're back to grass, I guess, or whatever.
But this is new, so we can.
It's new, but.
We can, we can enforce the ordinances that we have, and this will be the most beautiful spot in that whole area. And maybe other businesses will be encouraged to do something similar.
And we would be glad to do a three D color rendering of what it looks like with what we're proposing. What we're proposing is for, if you know, a pervious surface with the grass. We're going to do that on all the parking spaces. So we'll do a rendering where you can see that. And I think it's going to, I think, I think you'll like it. And I think it'll help with the runoff, with the water. It'll, it'll be the last requirement for that to go into the city's storm water. It's going into the ground. So, and it's also coming out of his pockets that he's willing to do. It works functionally and it looks with that. So we'll do that. We'll do that rendering.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Okay, you're sure a thousand square feet of landscaping, right? Would require twenty percent?
Twenty percent of the total, of the area, the building and the area in front and to the road.
Okay, I agree that there's a lot here in this spot, from this little big spot, that I would hate to see this not happen just because it looks in thousands of landscaping.
Not when we don't want the landscape. We don't want it to kill the property.
Right.
We need to find some common ground and make it look, but not be unreasonable. And we have to address that too on this topic.
Well, I would make your request in that we've got three issues. That if you're okay with two, the other will just put in limbo until we do the rendering. And if you like the rendering, if not, tell us what you'd like to see and we'll make it for it.
I don't know how.
What's the issue in limbo? The variance?
The variance on landscaping.
Oh, the, well, there's the issue of the thirty foot setback in the back. You'd have to go through either requesting that ordinance be changed.
Yeah, we are.
Or you need to go before the BZA and you have to request the variance through them.
Yeah.
Okay. So what was the other, the landscaping, which is the other issue in limbo?
Well, the other one is, I don't know that that's, it's not a requirement. It's, if it was your requirement, you didn't like the way.
I don't like the narrow drive space. Yeah.
Just, I got three exits, so we could exit out any area of those exits.
Yeah, we can, we can discuss this, you know, all of us together if you like. And I can have my planning team with me. And we can talk more about it and tell you what we think. And maybe you can come up with an alternative or, you know.
Well, and I also like to see the city, you know, obviously involved in that because it's a directional thing, right? You know, helping businesses locate here. Any other questions? So we're still at, we can't do anything with this without these three things resolved. Am I correct about that? Right.
Two, two things.
Two things.
Two things.
The landscaping and the.
Thirty foot setback.
Distance behind the building, which they can get a variance if they go to zoning on. So the landscape is kind of the key issue right here with us.
Okay.
If they choose to go for variance, we don't have much to say about that.
No, that's, that's totally up to you. All right, any questions for us?
So it was my understanding that you guys have variance, is it not?
No, no. It's a whole separate entity.
Okay.
You get to go home and group.
That's good.
All right. Any questions that you need? I mean, we are really trying.
No, that's fine. I mean, I understand, you know, we've got to follow the rules and guidelines here. So we're just, there, this is, you know, like twenty-three issues to three that's.
Okay, we're down to three.
And it's, and probably we could work it out.
Outstanding, but we appreciate you.
Also, you know, there's, if you, our property line starts way before that grassland starts, right? If you consider that, that as part of the landscape, because we're going to, we decided we're going to re-landscape the whole thing. If you give us that chance to do that, you know, maybe probably give us that chance to add as a landscape, we probably redo the whole thing right there too.
You'd have to get permission from T-Dot, because I think that's a T-Dot right away. You don't let the property outside.
Yeah, but it's, it's the grass onto it, though.
Yes, but it would be still considered their property.
We've got.
Yeah, so that's what I was trying to say, you know.
Consider it the right way. Good.
It is.
It is, isn't it?
Yeah, and T-Dot said, bring us, bring us something, we'll approve. They don't, they don't want to have to maintain that if he.
It is.
If I make that use of it.
Yeah.
And it is, and Lucy has an excellent point. It is, I mean, you're right there, smack dab, and it should be a showpiece.
That's what we're aiming for, too.
Okay.
Reclaim that property right away and landscape it when it go toward the toll.
No, but you could approve it as an ultimate landscaping plan.
So we can approve it as, if we agree.
I mean, you can approve, yeah, anything they do. I'm just telling you.
What, she's telling you the regulations.
I love what he does about.
Right.
Right.
All right, that's, your job is to tell us what the regulations are. And, all right. So at this point, we, do we table? Or do we withdraw and just resubmit? What do we do here?
I think we'll move forward. We'll bring, we'll bring, we'll ask T-Dot, which I think he'll say, fine, we'll make the front of it look like.
Motion to table.
Where she wanted to look like.
Motion to table.
Make a motion to table. All right. Awesome. Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
I'd say true.
Aye? All those opposed? Moving right along. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, let's hide away. Come on, guys. We've got some pretty pictures. I know it's a deja vu right now, but go ahead.
Well, it was great class previously, so I'll take this opportunity to sort of just. Remember to be bad in summer.
How was January again?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, probably, I think they need to be able to see, I think you're excited to.
We could put it up there.
Well, we can turn it.
Well, I just could be turned.
Yeah, because they.
You know, we've got the drawing.
Yeah, we got the drawing.
Why don't you show the, show the public what you have.
Yeah, we got the drawing.
That'll point you to it.
Okay, so I'm Brad Drack, a landscape architect. Yes, ma'am. This is Tran Walker, civil engineer with Reagan Smith. And with us is Tom Kale, homage representative.
Thank you.
So I wanted to just kind of recap and let you guys know sort of the process that we've gone through. We started working on this in Beverly Center. And we did multiple iterations of the site plan with Tom to try to come up with a plan that we felt met the R one zoning requirements. Once we got to that point, we then contacted Anya, set up a pre-op meeting with her staff, met with them, several planners within the organization. We got to a comfort level that we're meeting the zoning. And then so we started with more on the technical side of things. So from there, we hired the environmental consultant and we did the surface waters assessment. Our surveyors were on site. We did a bunch of field survey work to get existing topo and elevations of existing utilities and that type of thing that would inform our civil engineering. We also, Travis, have pre-op with Travis. Tran and Travis talked about utility approach and how to approach that, best places to tie in. We then conducted the traffic study and started on the engineering plan. So that's all the work that we've done to get to this point. So we've been working on this for quite some time. So we're not coming in sort of haphazardly. But to continue on, we were talking about open space in the mini area, so hopefully you guys have good thinking.
I don't think I thought that ahead of time.
There's a question right here.
I was not here for the workshops, but can you just preface what this project is and where it's located?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So this is our conceptual site plan. And it's based on our preliminary plan is based on this, but this is between Rens Nest and Highway forty-one. This is Main Street. McDonald's is here. And so this is a fifty acre tract. Its existing zoning is R one, and that's what our site plan is compliant with. It's proposing eighty-three single family lots.
How large are the lots?
Ten thousand square foot minimum, hundred foot signage minimum.
What's the minimum square footage?
What's a quarter acre? Square footage.
So, I'm sorry. May I ask, let me go to your question first. What was your question?
I just, what, what's the minimum square footage of a home that's going to be placed on that?
It's, we don't know the exact square footage at this point.
But I mean, it's not going to be seven hundred or more.
It's a, it's a hundred.
It's already been discussed.
It has to be eight hundred or more.
Eight hundred or more.
It's the current, is that it?
Okay.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I just was trying to figure out how large ten thousand square feet lot was compared to four acres.
Three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet.
Forty-three thousand? Okay, thank you.
Our average lot size is four tenths of an acre when you take out average og lot. So we're almost a half acre.
Thank you.
Overall.
Okay. So we were talking about, I think there's a question about HLA. And that seemed to be a good segue into talking about some of the park areas and open space features that we have. So within this development, we've got three park areas proposed. This is the first park area. So this park area here corresponds to this area here. So instead of doing a typical cul-de-sac, we kind of elevated it, made it wider and made a park feature out of it. And within this space, we'll have a pavilion, open lawn area, play feature, fire pit, hammock area, a few parking spaces. And so this will be centrally located with the project. I think we'll do a nice feature. This is community lot seventeen on the flat. And it's located at the Rens Nest entry, which is located here. So it's this lot here. This will be sort of an entry park. Again, we'll have some parking, central nail kiosk, another shade pavilion, a pickleball court perhaps, an area for pets, so a pet park, and then another open lawn area. The third area is this space here, which corresponds to this area along forty-one. And I mentioned previously that we have a trail buffer that surrounds the entire perimeter of the project. And so this area would act as sort of a trailhead to access that. So we would have some parking, another open lawn area, and then access to the trail with landscaping and seating and that type of thing. Also on this board, we're showing some precedent imagery of some features in the park. So you can see images of play features, shade structures, pavilions and fire pit areas. And then also, we wanted to show the representative architectural styles that we're proposing. And so you can see it's very arts and crafts, mountain lodge themed. And so that's sort of. And so, that's sort of an overview of the parks and green space.
Any questions here?
So, your studies have deemed Rinns Nest as an adequate entry when it's right between McDonald's and Sonic and soon to be another hotel down that road? So, that's traffic that you've not even counted. And you says, so, I think Sonic and McDonald's would be sad to say that you only said four hundred people went down that road.
That's just based on the hard counts that we actually did, real counts, real traffic.
And the road, you don't, you're not gonna do anything to the road?
The road meets T-Dot's design standards for a local roadway with that level of traffic. It meets all the standards. It's got the adequate lane width. It's got the adequate shoulders.
The reason I'm asking is when this came up, Rinns Nest was not going to be an entry. Just forty-one was proposed as.
Most of the time, you want, you definitely want two points of access.
Excuse me?
You definitely want two points of access to any residential subdivision. I mean, for emergency access.
Yeah, I understand that.
And everything else. So, in most places, you know, you've got like a threshold of number of units that you can add to a subdivision before it's required to have a second access point.
So, how far off the existing road is the first house? And it's one quarter acre in small tiny house, and where is the TBA right away factor into that?
TBA, we've got it shown here, and we've kind of, the way we've laid out our site plan and our roads, we've used the streams on the site and the easements that are on the site, and we've kind of laid out our lots and everything so that they complement and work with those things that are on the property.
Okay, so, I probably didn't hear this part. What's the setback from the road as it exists now, since I don't.
Per curvy, I believe it's thirty foot left front setback.
Thirty, ten yards? And so, you have an HOA, but do you have, is it gated?
Yes.
The entire community's gated?
Mm-hmm, correct.
How many total acres?
Fifty acres.
So, only fifty.
Fifteen, and we did, I guess, I guess you've got a nice board to show the gate that we're positioning.
So, what I'm trying to understand what gate means, that goes all the way around your eighty-three homes?
No, this is just vehicular gates. Vehicular gates.
Sorry?
Vehicular gates.
Okay.
Could I, the site plan that you were holding up, could I ask you a question about that?
Absolutely.
On your southeast corner, you show a piece of property that's segmented from the rest of the development. Is that part of this development, or do you, what are your intentions? Would it access both forty-one and Main Street, US border?
You're talking about the commercial piece that's between Dean Lays and the hotel?
Yes, it's, so on your property line, it's found inside your property.
Yeah. It's Zone C2?
Yeah.
Um, we're, initially would like to develop it, but the challenge we've got is, we don't own the frontage. Because somebody, we saw, when they sold off the railroad, they sold the railroad stuff off. So, we had to keep a, an access point to make it, keep it a legal lot. So, we kept the flag going back to forty-one, although I don't anticipate we'll ever. I think we'll end up being able to buy that frontage to get that direct access to Main Street. But there's no plans, immediate plans to develop that.
Thank you.
We will put a utility easement out there as part of this plan. But I don't know, do we want to segue into utilities, or does anybody have any questions?
You have a question on this?
I just got a question about, are you built, I mean, Tom, are you developing, are you building each home that's going to go on each lot? Or are you putting the lots up for sale, and then the owners of the property would then build a home, but it would have to fall into an architectural review? Can you explain how, what, what, what you're, yeah, what is?
We're gonna sell lots to builders or to individuals that already have a builder.
Okay.
And that, but all house plans will have to go in front of the, originally the developer for approval on design and to meet the architectural standards of the subdivision, and then later on the HOA, if, when the developer turns it over to the HOA at some point.
So, so when you talk about recreational homes and single-family residences, you don't really know at this point what the mix will be. That will be determined by who buys the lots and what they intend.
Correct.
So, it could, it could go more one way or the other. You're not sure.
The studies I've done of the existing subdivisions, including cliff tops and even the assembly, cliff tops has about thirty percent full-time homeowners, as far as I can tell.
Okay.
The rest of them seem to be hanging in that fifteen to twenty percent full-time.
Okay.
So, I'm assuming that that's kind of how it's going to play out. But hopefully, I mean, we'd love for it to be more. I mean, no problem. Well, you know, we're pricing this to where we think it's affordable, where somebody can get in for less than, be all-in for less than three hundred thousand, which is, which is a pretty good deal. And a lot of, a lot more people can afford that than stuff in the cliff tops, I can guarantee it.
So, you're saying when you sell these lots, once you get to thirty-three single-family detached housing, no more?
Huh?
You're saying you've got thirty-three single-family detached housing, you've got forty-nine recreational.
It's, it, it.
What is up in the two categories?
It's an analysis for traffic. When, when traffic, you think about traffic, if you've got people that live somewhere full-time, they have a schedule, right? So, they're gonna leave at a, most of them leave at a certain time of day, and most of them come home at a certain time of day if they work. And, you know, so there's these, when you have, right, and so, but people that are using them temporarily, you know, it's their vacation home or VRBO or something like that, those people come and go at different times. And that's why you have the, the traffic flow spaces out more because of those track, those behaviors of the people that are going to be in.
When's anticipated done out again? Is it twenty-five?
Anticipated.
Were they all gonna be done?
Oh, all done?
Yeah.
Um, if I believe some of the builders that I've been talking to, we could probably sell out the lots in, in about a month. There's, there's.
Are these local builders?
It was a local builder, but I don't know who, what all he's got. I do know if you look at, at what has happened with the other newer subdivisions, they, for the most part, they've sold out extremely quickly. So, we're looking at this, you know, as soon as we can get past this stage, then they can do the rest of their engineering that they need to do. And, and we can get to that point, we're probably gonna put a bond up to secure and go ahead and start cutting roads and put in the utilities and everything else. We'll go as quick as we can, because I'd like to be able to sell some lots before the leaves come back out on the trees, because it's easier.
Any other questions?
Speaking of, well, speaking of trees, I mean, not having, you all probably not having lived up here or visited up here, one of the things that is horrendous really for, I'll say this, for the assembly is the noise of the interstate. And really, anywhere in Montegoal, I don't care where you are, you hear that constant hum. So, you will be removing trees, a lot of trees, between the interstate and forty-one.
We're not clear-cutting this.
Our intent is not, this will not be a clear cut property.
Okay, so.
In fact, it's highly restrictive on how many trees even a built, somebody building a home, how many trees they can take out.
Well, that's good. That's good. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, any questions before we move on?
Yeah, I just, I just had a question. So, you're saying that there's going to be partial full-time residents, and then they'd be a portion of like second homes, correct? Is that what you were anticipating?
That's what y'all's market is showing.
Right, but did you also say that, I mean, so there's going to be an HOA, so the HOA is going to allow vacation rentals or Airbnbs within this as well?
Sure.
Will there be onsite management? Or is this really going to be run by the individual property owners?
We run by the HOA in the property, which is a property owner.
What?
So, you know, keep in mind, HOA, I mean, vacation rentals, they pay their taxes.
And hotel rentals.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, that's, you know, you're looking at the equivalent of another hotel, probably.
So, what were you going to ask us to table it, we have to see?
Yes, most of the time, yes.
Because we're not ready.
I don't think y'all are ready to vote on it yet.
We, we're not, and we, like I said, we got a massive data we haven't even looked at. If you go to trouble, put it together, we need to look trouble we.
Right, and, and I'm, I'm, we're okay with that. And I could, Joe Lester couldn't make it anyways tonight, and he wanted to have his attorney here too. And so, it, it's just perfect storm. Let's, let's move it to January.
Okay.
Give you time, and, and, and I think there's some question as to, you know, I think Travis, we, we need to kind of hear from Travis, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and I've, I've been curious, you know, when was the, the capacity study was completed, right? Have we, have we seen any of those results? Has any of that been shared? Um, yeah, I mean, it would help us as planning of subdivisions.
Anything come out on that? I didn't hear anything but an okay, which was kind of.
Travis, Travis told them, as I understand it.
For the year.
That wasn't, capacity wasn't going to be a problem, is what, what Travis told them now. I'd like to, I'd like to kind of see.
Motion to table?
All right, can, he, it sounds like he's withdrawing.
Not withdrawing, table.
Table. All right, real quick, is there any more of the presentation, since we've got everybody here who wants to know? Is there any more that we need to know?
I, I mean, there's nerdy engineering stuff.
We love it.
But I think we've dealt with it, you did the highlights.
Okay, any questions? I mean, I mean, we're here, and we're gonna table it.
No, we're withdrawing it.
Uh, no.
We'll say, I know it sounds like traffic was, like people concerned about traffic. We have performed a full T-Dot traffic study on this, and we have submitted the, this study to T-Dot. We've done hard counts at a bunch of intersections. We've done forty-one and the proposed entrance to the subdivision. For forty-one intersects West Main Street. We analyzed that, as well as Rinns, Rinns Nest, West Main Street, and the I twenty-four roof down ramps. We've, we've got counts on all these areas, and we've run analysis on that. We've looked at, with the proposed use of this, the number of units coming in, we've looked at our turn lines required. They aren't. There's a very low number of traffic out there. The level of service, which is the metric used to determine kind of the happiness of drivers more or less, everything's an A, which is, you know, that's, that's as good as it is. And, you know, there are, I think on West Main Street, there was a level of service C, but our project had no impact to the delay of that. So, basically, as it's functioning now, it will be no worse, or no, not noticeably worse. So, we've, we've done this thing by a traffic standpoint to the fullest extent as required, you know, as T-Dot outlines it. And we've submitted to those folks for review, and they've sent us a letter saying for a concept approval for what we're showing for access.
Could you get a more detailed letter from T-Dot, because I had talked to, you know, Brad.
Yeah, I've been meaning to do that.
We can reach back out to them and have them reference the traffic study and the subdivision.
The amount of.
And also, over the period of time, like what date was the traffic study tied to?
Right, we've got that.
Eighteen pages of, we've had.
It's, it's all in there. We've got all the dates that the counts are taken on. We usually do it with schools in session, so.
Right.
Wait for schools in session. You do it on the middle of the week. You don't want weekend, weekend things, start things off. You're looking at the peak hours, but you're, you know, the morning rush hours, the evening rush hour. And you look at the worst one, and you run your analysis on that, and we've, we've done the whole, the whole thing.
So, there's no, there's no sense at this time that a traffic light would be a good idea?
Not at all.
It's never going to be happening. Traffic light at Rinns Nest will never happen.
You've got to meet a bunch of different warrant, I call them warrants, and there's a bunch of criteria that you have to meet before the federal highway will allow you to the traffic signal. Unless there's like, with this little traffic is what we were showing on the traffic counts, we would have to be like a school zone or something like that. Something major would have to come in to trip, to what you're saying, something very.
Yeah, absolutely.
This is a comment, something to think about. I would ask that when you draft the covenants and restrictions for the HOA, that you limit the number of rentals. I've been familiar with other projects where they don't like a lot of tenants, because the tenants don't seem to care about the property. Or if it is glorified VRBO, it's just going to be traffic with people that may or may not care about the appearance of the overall property. So, I would encourage study of that a little bit, because if we're going to have all tenants theoretically, they will come and go. That would be a traffic area, and you wonder what the management company will do to.
I don't, I don't think you're gonna have, I mean, I, I think you can look at what's here in, already in Montegoal and see how, how it's going to play out. Because, I mean, if you look at the amount of VRBOs in the assembly, there are a bunch.
We don't have VRBOs in the assembly.
Well, there's, there are some, I think, on.
We have a rental office, and some people rent their cottages, but that's governed through the office and a whole set of rules and regulations. My experience is, if we, and I don't want to debate this all night, I'm just asking that you consider that. We don't want to.
But then you got, you're saying you got to tell one property owner that buys a lot that he can do what, that he can do it, and you got another one in there in the same subdivision saying you can't.
The covenants I've seen, you just put a percentage.
Yeah.
If you have eighty lots, five percent can be rental.
Don't think we're allowing long-term rentals anyway.
Well, that might be a bigger problem. I just don't want to go towards a larger tiny home scenario.
These aren't tiny homes.
I know.
Please do not say that term.
That's why I say large. You know, eight hundred square feet, a thousand square feet, you still have that transient traffic.
These houses can be twenty-four hundreds per feet.
This is R1.
Okay. Um, is it tabled or what? It was tabled, right?
Okay, I think y'all got to do a motion of seconds and vote.
Well, we know that. We got that. So, if, what are we doing?
We put that with tables.
Okay.
I'll make motion.
All right, motion to table.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
I'll say.
All right, there's a second, any discussion?
You have a question in the back, that's what I'm doing.
Very good.
Yeah, I got a question.
All right.
Appreciate the presentation. Well done. But is the packet going to be put together for public consumption? I mean, people come in here to meet, and you get a small snapshot right here, and they're supposed to have some input. Is this going to be presented in a packet people can see before the next meeting, where they can digest it a little bit? Casey, I'm not saying there are, but it'd be kind of a nice way to go.
I didn't get the PowerPoint until today, so I didn't put it in the packet. But the site plans, conceptual site plans, layout, was all included in the agenda packet. I'm happy to send you anything that they've sent me, if you'd like to talk to me after the meeting and give me your information.
Okay, you can send me an email, right? It's not going to be on like, um, Montegoal.
I mean, that's up to.
Town, the town of Montegoal, that's going to be up to the mayor, how you wish to communicate.
She'll be able to.
Email.
Of course not, you cannot. That's for your consideration.
Thank you.
Um, so we, any other discussion?
I just, Tom, I just have another question. I know this is the dollars and cents. Everything is, right? So, but my question is, I mean, the thing, my initial response is, there are too many houses. There's not enough green space. You're cramming too many residences onto this wonderful piece of property in a wonderful location. Had you considered limiting, or did you work with any numbers that were smaller than eighty-three homes?
We, we designed it, when you guys turned us down for the zoning.
Yeah.
For the smaller footprint homes.
Right.
Uh, we're stuck with R1, and we've designed one that meets R1 and well exceeds it.
Right.
I think your first proposal had a hundred and five units.
Yeah.
And you're down to eighty-three.
I mean, you know, we're, the.
But I mean, just in terms of, if I were wanting to purchase a lot in your development, I would want a bigger lot. I would want more green space. I would want more amenities. I would want a feeling of being in a special place on this mountain, rather than in some jam-packed neighborhood.
You're not, you're not in a jam-packed neighborhood. You're in.
Your lots are a hundred foot wide minimum.
I mean, yeah, that they're, they're, I mean, and you're putting, you're in. I mean, yeah, that, they're, they're, I mean, you're putting, you're in ten thousand, or even twelve, fourteen thousand feet, you're putting twelve hundred square feet in it. I mean, there's a, that's a, that's a pin dot in, in a wooded lot.
Okay, I appreciate that, I just wanted a little clarification, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, I've got a motion on the table, for a table, I've got a second, we've had discussion, all those in favor? Any opposed? Fantastic, thank you, fellas, appreciate it. Table till next month? Do we want to talk about the electrical, electric vehicle charging stations?
Maybe some background was wrong, didn't it?
Right, so I've been getting a lot of requests. I've gotten two requests, actually, but it's very more common in the region to get requests for electric vehicle charging stations. And what I've requested of them in the past is just to provide a site plan to me, to make sure that wherever they want to place them, there's still being the parking requirements. And then I'm not sure what else, because we don't have anything in our ordinance that deals with electric charging stations. And I think it's going to become way more common. I don't know if you want to regulate them. And I don't even know what to tell them to apply for, for a building permit, do they need an electrical permit? Do we have anything like that? I don't, and I haven't been able to, well, since we, I don't have Earl anymore, I don't know who to ask.
International Building Code, I think, might help out with the electrical commission and stuff like that. And I know we've adopted, Town of Montego's adopted International Building Code, correct?
Right.
Right.
So I think that might help with some of the regulations on that.
Okay. But I do think we need a plan, because they are here, and they will be here, so...
We're on a major corridor, there will be more and more.
Yeah.
After they pull that out, they're going to need it for...
They're going to be able to get up.
Yeah.
So where are they putting it, and where's the next one, et cetera? There are many Tesla charging stations down in South Pittsburgh, but you need that Tesla connection.
They've already approached Montego.
Yeah, but they never heard.
Yeah, we need to address it, you're right.
And I think it'd be helpful to have an ordinance for them. The ones that you're referring to are where Tesla charging stations, so you can only charge Teslas at the wiggly wiggly. And they were proposing to change the setback. And so I told them that they weren't going to fit in, they'd have to come before the planning commission. And I'm finding, I don't know, this, this is just from my experience, if there's any kind of pushback, they're out. Oh, really, okay. Okay, but we do need a, a plan. Yeah.
I think the direction on our building code would be a good way to start. It may be that it's a site plan and electrical permit.
I can look into that, but maybe, and there isn't any EV charging stations ordinance that exists in the area yet. I can check if they exist in other parts of the country, but...
Traffic patterns may be an issue too.
You know those people that's for the money.
Well, yeah, you're backed out, you pulled through, whatever it is. So we don't have a lot of tenders.
They go and get coffee and food and stuff.
I probably need some time to do this research, I'm not sure if I'm going to have it ready by January.
It's not a motion on that. We've got some hot topics working here already.
All right, commissioners, anything that, well, we've got hearing of persons having business before the commission. Would anybody like to, all right, go for it.
Okay, so that, that site plan that I looked at, I've been looking at it since, I don't know, a while ago. And it's been like, I don't know, seven, eight evaluations, and I didn't give them an evaluation the last one or two times, because it was still the same feedback every time. And so a lot of times, cities will charge a review fee after the first or second review, because you're wanting to promote and encourage high-quality site plans. And what I saw is that every time I sent one back, they'd send me the same thing, they wouldn't address my comments. And so to prevent this happening in the future, and maybe to, you know, have a, I don't know, benefit to the city, you could charge a fee for every review plan that, you know, every time I have a review plan, you charge them.
Is that common practice?
Yes, they try to, they have really high fees, because they have so many reviews that come in, they want to encourage high-quality plans. And, I mean, with the development coming into Montego, this is becoming more common. So this is just, I'm bringing it up for you to think about, and consider, and I can look more into what the fees are in other smaller towns, if you're interested.
I think it's something to look into, absolutely. Dean!
Yes, in regards to that, if the issue is with the city's planner, instead of the developer, are you going to reimburse the, the developer for all the extra man-hours he's paying the landscape architect, or whoever is doing the engineering work? I mean, that goes two ways.
It's a discussion.
You can have it have the first two reviews free, and then after that, and you could charge them. Because I agree, I don't touch everything the first time things get turned in to me. But I guarantee I've probably tapped them by fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, like, it's, that's a lot. And I spent a lot of hours on it.
Tim, what'd you have to say?
Same thing, typically you have a set, it could be one to three, no additional charge. Once the plan starts coming in, lacking the information to request it, then they get charged. I mean, that's typical, like...
I mean, it seems reasonable.
But you got to get charged every review.
Right, the first one or two would be free. Any other, commissioners, do you have anything to say, anything you want to add? To map them? I don't know, is there anything? We don't know yet. Mayor, any words?
No.
Okay.
Fine, thank you all.
Did we settle the industrial thing, anything? No, we did not. We're tabled, we're tabled. And then direction on it is what the point is, I guess, what do you want to work on? Right. I mean, what would you like me to... I really think we need a land use to understand that more, from the, a direction from the city.
And Nate and I are, we're, I mean, in the very beginning stages of developing an RFQ, requesting a consultant to look into like a master plan for the city, so that you have goals outlining with the planning commission, and residents would want to see. It would be a very huge undertaking in terms of community engagement. And that could be what are the goals that lead your decisions, rather than having it as a, you know...
I just feel like it's a whack-a-mole sometimes, I think we need a bigger picture.
You know, the, what I thought, and I'm a linear thinker here, but the designer to pass an ordinance is why this discussion came up, and that ordinance was to add C2 with C3, correct? That's what I understand.
Yeah, move, move it to special...
And that's all it's about, we've already got one in there, and we will add the other commercial zone to it, just, just that simple. And we kind of let it grow on us.
Make it even more difficult. To make it more, so special, adding special exception. All right, Ed, do you have any more input on that? Okay, I don't have any more input, anyone?
Y'all have to go over this, line by line, and send our recommendations to on you.
Right, or we can go through it, like, I mean, we, we did a special called meeting for the ADUs, or we did a workshop.
We did a workshop.
For the ADUs, it was a public meeting, we went through line by line with the city council and PC. And I don't know if we have to do it that intensively this time, but maybe just doing it line by line like that would be helpful during a workshop. And maybe not when there's so many other things, big ticket items on the agenda, because I don't know if we can all fit in, but...
Right on.
Or maybe have a longer workshop.
If you have a plan, let's make a plan for that.
You want to do it for January third?
Before January third?
No, on January third. On January third. I know.
I think we need to serve, do a survey. We'll pick a date.
We'll pick a date, okay. Okay. Anybody else have any comments as, before us? Want to have, say anything? Come on, you always got something to say, come on.
I know, and you always want to tell me you're going to throw up if I say anything else.
See, here's us getting along.
I'm going to pass.
Okay.
I think...
What was, you were talking about C2 and C3 being combined, but then you were saying something about zoning, I zoning? Industrial zoning, so are those two separate issues that you were just talking about?
They're discussing, they want to discuss, somebody requested, this is two separate issues.
Okay. It's two, but yet one in a weird way.
Okay.
An applicant requested rezoning for industrial and a C3.
Okay, so from a C3 to move it to industrial?
It, it went through the planning commission and then got stopped at city council, didn't go through. Because they were afraid that it would allow adult entertainment.
That Dean was going to have a...
Toxic waste.
Well, but, okay, industrial has a lot of that stuff.
Yes.
That, that can be put on there, right?
This is a single line I am self-storing.
We don't have an I zoning, not right now.
No, not on the map.
Do we need an I zoning?
That's a great question.
That's our discussion, yeah.
So, and, and then the other issue is, Montego Planning Commission is looking at, do we need more storage units in Montego? Or do we want to restrict it, because we don't want as many storage units in here?
Because C2s are corridors, you know, going to Tracy, going to Swanee, you know, going to Palom, those are C2s. C1 is our business district right downtown, and then C3 is our exits where we make our money. So, you know, it's, everything has a use, and so we need to make those decisions.
And if you want me to, if you want to talk on the phone, and I can explain it maybe even further, or more clearly, let me know.
You can explain it all of us.
Anybody, anybody else? Leslie, you got anything?
I just want to know the names of the first people that presented the project next to the pig. They didn't give their name.
Okay.
I'll get it from you.
Okay, very good. All right, gotcha. All right, I've got a motion on the table to adjourn. You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, we're out of here, thank you, everyone.
Do they come over there, you go come over here?